I'd like to call a meeting to order for good, please. Supervisor Dunn, do you leave us an invocation, please?
Sir, bow your head, please. Laura, we just thank you for what you've given us. For life, for liberty, we don't take for granted. We in this board are here as your servants to go and help the people of Frederick County. Just ask that you give us wisdom. And wisdom as we go and interact. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Chairman Lofton, you leave us the pledge, please, sir.
Would you stand and face the flag and join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic before which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda.
We have no changes proposed, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You're taking a motion to adopt agendas presented.
So moved.
So moved. Second? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We'll adopt the agenda. Citizen comments. Did anyone sign up, Ms. Phillips?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Consent agenda. I would note that there is an amended set of minutes that would be included in our decision on the consent agenda. How would the board like to handle those?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes.
Second.
Heard the motion is second. Any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. The consent agenda. So Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn?
Just one comment. Last week or two weeks ago when we were doing the budget, I showed some slides on the budget and the slides came from the Board of Education and the chart came from information from both Loudoun County and Frederick County. So for those people that wondered where that information came from, that was the source. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? All right, county officials. Supervisor Lofton, if you'd help me, we have a resolution of appreciation for Ms. June Wilmot. Ms. June, would you join us?
Resolution of appreciation for June Wilmot, Planning Commissioner, Frederick County, Virginia. Whereas June Wilmot served Frederick County, Virginia for approximately 14 years as a member of the Planning Commission. And whereas June was appointed as a representative of the Shawnee District on the Frederick County Planning Commission on March 9, 2005, and was subsequently appointed as the at-large representative on January 23, 2008, and has served continuously until September 1, 2018. And whereas June was elected by her peers as chairman of the Planning Commission on January 18, 2006, and served in that capacity until January 17, 2018. And whereas June's insight and leadership abilities successfully guided the Planning Commission and the various subcommittees on which she served, particularly the Comprehensive Plans and Program Committee. And whereas June provided important guidance leading to a major rewrite of the Frederick County 2030 Comprehensive Plan, followed by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan update. And whereas June's knowledge and conscientious dedication to bettering her community have enriched the county by promoting communication and citizen engagement, as shown by increased community participation in the county's planning efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation to June Wilmot for her devotion to service and dependability and wishes her all the best in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of this public servant. Adopted the 12th day of December, 2018. Congratulations.
Hanley Regional Library, unexpired four-year term. Don't think we've had anyone apply. Would certainly appreciate any interest. Hold of us, please. Extension leadership in Back Creek.
Yes, sir. You have before you an application of Mr. Brandon H. Monk. This young man has been active in the agricultural community and the 4-H community, and he will make an excellent representative. And I would nominate Mr. Brandon H. Monk to serve on the Extension Leadership Council in Back Creek District.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. And he's so appointed. Thank you, sir. All right, committee business. We have finance. Supervisor Slaughter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on April 17 at 8:00 a.m. Items number one through four were considered on consent agenda, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number five, the victim witness program manager requests a general fund budget transfer in the amount of $17,039 from fringe benefits to various operating items. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number six, the Social Services Director requests a general fund budget decrease in the amount of $340,500. Of this amount, $53,298 are local dollars that will come back to the county. The reduction represents year-end adjustments to bring the county budget in line with the state budget. And I might just add that because of the leadership of Mrs. Green and her exemplary staff, that these dollars are coming back to Frederick County because of their hard work in trying to find foster homes for the children as opposed to residential homes. So the brunt of these dollars coming back are from their very dedicated and hard work. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
And the second. Any discussion? Anyone? Hearing none. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number seven, the Fire and Rescue Chief requests a fire and rescue expense recovery fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $458,144. This amount represents revenue expected to be received in excess of budgeted revenue. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
And the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thanks, ma'am. All right, next we have the Human Resources Committee report. Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Chairman, the Human Resources Committee made recommendations regarding dismissal. And it's a good report that brings some things together that protects both the person that potentially is being dismissed in the county. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
The second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the second one is the Human Resources Committee presented a recommended change to Frederick County human resources policy regarding verification of employment references. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
The second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Does that conclude your report, sir?
It does, sir.
Thank you. Next we have the Public Safety Committee report. Supervisor Wells?
Yes, sir. The Board of Supervisors referred the draft Energy Response Performance Guide to the chief's working group for consideration and review prior to the board action. The chief's working group has unanimously endorsed this Emergency Response Performance Guide, and the committee, Public Safety Committee, recommends adoption of the Performance Guide, and I so move.
So heard the motion is their second.
Second.
And the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Conclude your report, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, so next we have public hearings, non-Planning commission issues, outdoor festival permit, Curves Decor Hog-Holly Rally.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is an application by Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson for the Curves Decor National Hog Rally, which will be held June 19, 20th, 21st, and 22nd with varying times during those days. And the event will be held on the grounds of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson located at 140 Independence Drive in Winchester, Virginia. We do have a representative of Groves here if the board has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, staff? Or of Groves representatives? Anyone? How would the board like to handle this?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry. There is a public hearing. And would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed festival permit? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move to approve the outdoor festival permit for Curves Decor National Hog Rally on June 19 through June 22 of this year.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Permit is approved. That will bring us to an outdoor festival permit for vintage bikes and swap meet.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is another outdoor festival permit application for Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson for the vintage bikes and swap meet to be held on June 15, 2019 from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They do have a rain date proposed for June 29 with the same times applying. The festival will be located at 140 Independence Drive, which is the property for Winchester Groves Harley-Davidson. And again, we have a representative from Winchester Harley-Davidson here to answer any questions if the board so chooses.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of staff or of the representatives from Winchester Harley-Davidson? Anyone? Thank you. It's a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this application proposed festival permit? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, how would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Trout?
I move to approve outdoor festival permit, vintage bikes and swap meet for June 15, 2019.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Permit is approved. 12-month outdoor festival permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application for a 12-month outdoor festival permit by the Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. This is an annual permit that runs from January through December of the calendar year. It's not 12 months from the date they get the permit. Right now they're proposing two activities or two festivals. They're proposing a Civil War Kids Day Camp on June 15, and their reenactment to be held in October. The dates are October 18, 19, and 20. And then there may be some other activities that are yet to be determined. All activities will be held at 843 Valley Pike in Middletown, Virginia. And we do have a representative from Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation here if the board has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff or the Cedar Creek Battlefield folks? Anyone? So is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment? Yes, sir.
I am Patrick Keough. I am the manager of Cedar...
Pull that mic up, please, sir. You're gonna have to get a little more physical with it. It'll come up if you push it. There you go.
I am Patrick Keough. I'm manager of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. I want to introduce Jeanette Schaefer, who is our current president of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. As you're aware, this has been an annual event with the unfortunate cancellation of last year's. We've been doing this since 1990, and the community at large has welcomed us typically. And we found out through inquiries that last year's cancellation was regrettable yet and negatively affected the community with lost income and especially in the virions of Middletown stretching into Stevens City, probably the northern part of Frederick County, Warren County, and Shenandoah County as well. We welcome the opportunity to hold the event again. And also of the two events currently on the list, we are considering, we're celebrating over 30 years of preservation effort. Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation was created in 1988, and our first efforts to preserve the battlefield occurred in 1989. Therefore, we're considering having a, what would you call it?
Anniversary event?
Possibly in September. It's not on the agenda yet. We're still working on trying to get the invitations and speakers and everything. So do you have anything to add?
Hopefully so. I think he covered it.
Any questions?
Any questions of these folks? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. All right, how would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would, it is regrettable that this had to be postponed because of, I don't know what you want to call actions of other people, but I'm glad to see that they're coming back and instituting it again. So I would move that we approve the 12-month outdoor festival permit request for Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation.
Heard the motion is their second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Sorry about that.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries, and the festival permit is approved. That brings us to ordinance amendments, Frederick County Code, Chapter 165.
Mr. Chairman, I have that one. This is an amendment to provide for an exemption for surviving spouses of certain persons killed in the line of duty, specifically those persons whose spouses are recovered would be employees or members of any Virginia state or local agency engaged in law enforcement, corrections, firefighting, emergency medical services, civil defense, or emergency management. Again, it would only apply to surviving spouses of people from Virginia-based agencies. It's very similar in its operation to the existing exemption for surviving spouses of service members. This is enabled but not mandatory under the state code.
Questions of Mr. Williams? Anyone? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed ordinance change? Anyone at all? Last call? We'll close the public hearing. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Trout?
I move to approve the ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, to add an Article III, an exemption for surviving spouses of certain persons killed in the line of duty.
Great. You've heard the motion is their second.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. My apologies. All right, that will finish our public hearings. Site plan, information only. Mr. Klein?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here this evening with an information and discussion item for site plan 2318 for the Liberty Chase subdivision. And this is a proposal to develop approximately 1.97 acres of land zoned RP residential performance to 17 single-family attached dwelling units, better known as townhouses. The applicant received a waiver from the Department of Planning and Development of the master plan requirement in July of 2017. And in lieu of a master development plan, they've chose to process a site plan and processing a site plan in lieu of a master plan. It comes before the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors as an information and discussion item.
Questions of Mr. Klein? Anyone? Thank you very much, sir. All right, that'll bring us to board liaison reports. Are there any? Anyone? All right, this will bring us to the portion of the meeting for citizen comments on any issue. Anyone at all like to address the board? Anyone? And we'll close the citizen comment portion. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
I'd send an email to all board members regarding the airport tax issue, just looking for information that would go and encourage the airport to do what it needs to do to differentiate business and residential items, seeing if there's any interest in the board on having a board of consensus to go forward with that, or if that was just something that might only be of my interest.
Anyone else have comments? I think it's the kind of thing we would address with our legislative representatives as part of our legislative agendas, but we can do it at any time. Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, to follow up on Supervisor Dunn's comments here, I would like to know if the board has any interest in having a joint meeting with the airport authority and the board members so that we might exchange ideas and information and get a better feel for how each entity can work together a little closer to develop another level of relationship so that we can work together on issues like this. Just don't add that there. See if there would be any interest in doing that.
All right, folks have heard the question?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor McCarthy?
I do support the idea of having a joint meeting with the airport authority and our board. I think it does behoove us to create a stronger relationship there, especially considering that, you know, there's proposed legislative changes that Supervisor Dunn is proposing. There's questions on the airport tax. So I think it would behoove us to have a more comprehensive meeting on those types of items.
Work session environment? Any other comments?
Sure.
Okay. Do I hear any objections? I'll speak with Chairman Fisher and we'll see what we can accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sir. Supervisor McCarthy?
I was just noticing you're wearing your Apple Blossom tie tonight. And I noticed a couple other spectators in the audience wearing their pink and green tonight, so I just want to remind everyone that a week from now, we will be in full swing of the Apple Blossom Festival, and I encourage all of our citizens to get involved and partake in this great tradition that we've enjoyed for well over 90 years here in Frederick County and Winchester. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Trout?
Another question I kind of want to pose to the board. Back in November, I brought up the idea of doing some kind of budget survey to our constituents to get a pulse or feeling for what the pulse of the county is, for what people are prioritizing and what their expectations are of county services. Initially at that meeting publicly, the board was supportive of such a survey in some capacity. And then later on via email, it was kind of dismissed as maybe too cumbersome or something that would take a little bit too much time. So in light of all of the input that we had over this past budget season, I would like to bring this up again as another suggestion to see if the rest of the board would be open to some, organizing some kind of survey, whether that's electronically or via mail, to get input from our constituents before next budget season rolls around. So I'd say sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Further comment? Anyone?
Yes, I'd like to make one. Some of us on the Finance Committee have had some discussion and then about perhaps having a public hearing earlier in the process so that the citizens could come and speak about what's most important. I don't know if that would, and again, I think that would have to go to Mr. Williams to make sure that we could accomplish a public hearing prior to the end of the period. You know, we're required by law to do that, but maybe that would accomplish the public hearing and the citizens would have input prior to us making a formal decision. And I don't know if that would accomplish what your goal Supervisor Trout would be. Mr. Chairman?
I think it's a good idea. A good idea. All the public input you can get is great, so I don't know how to approach it as far as setting up a committee or yourself or someone to put up a suggestion of maybe this might be something we could take a look at. And I think that would be the next step. I don't know whether maybe staff could help you with that. And put together a couple of suggestions and bring that to the board and say, how about something like this?
Supervisor Trout?
Sure. First Supervisor Slaughter, yes, I love that idea. I think that would be great in addition to a survey. I think what my thoughts are with some kind of survey is that we have a lot of constituents that cannot come out for an evening. And so I feel like we hear from the same, you know, 40 people over and over and over again, and there are a lot more people that we serve in our county, and I would like to hear from them as well. So I don't know, and I'd also like the data from a survey, because you can ask very clear questions, whereas when people come to address us for public comment, sometimes it gets convoluted and it's not very clear exactly, and it's hard to compare. So certainly Mr. Wells can come up with something and send it to you or work with staff to come up with some kind of idea. I guess I just wanted to see if the rest of the board was interested in that, and then whether we could do something, obviously as a millennial, I would rather it be electronic so that I don't have to. But we could also send home paper. Paper survey would be fine, also a little more expensive, but, so, thank you.
Miss a lot of our population electronically.
This is true.
At one time you did bring a, from another county. I still have that copy somewhere in my file, and I'd probably, you know, bring that back in and start out with that as a basis. It wasn't bad at all, I didn't think so. Okay.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
I'm in support of Ms. Trout's suggestion on having public comment earlier in the process. I think that's a good thing. And if she wants to have a survey, that's fine, too. But I'd also like to suggest that we either have a public hearing and/or we simply have a town hall meeting. That way you can have an interaction with the populace that comes here. They can make questions. We can respond without the three-minute rule, et cetera, as long as everybody's courteous and what's doing that. And I would support, you know, that type of much more interactive, here's why I think and why. People can say what they're thinking and why.
Are we allowed to do a town hall meeting with the full board? We are.
We can accept comments during any regularly scheduled advertised meeting.
Whether, you know...
Not a public hearing, wrong term, but we can meet the goal. Other comments?
I guess one of the things I had thought about is once we have our preliminary numbers, the ones that we have all the list of wishes for departments before we've charged staff to go in and prioritize, that maybe that would be a good starting point for the community to look at. And then we get their input, too, as to what the highest priorities would be as well before we go through months and months and months. I'm very glad you brought that up.
I think that would be great.
So.
Okay. Any other comments? Anyone? Mr. Chairman Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I move you adjourn.
Please do adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We'll stand adjourned and certainly thank everyone for their attendance, time, attention.